Once again, we're not able to resolve the technical issue, so we're just going to get started like they did in the old days, possibly without some of the technical things that we're accustomed to. First order of business is to approve the January 14th minutes. Any comments or changes, commissioners? We have approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Thank you. Continuance requests.
We have a number of uncontested requests for continuances. Items eighteen through twenty-five are all deferred until February the 25th. Item twenty-six is deferred indefinitely. Item twenty-seven is deferred until March the 11th, and item twenty-eight has been withdrawn.
Did anyone come down here today to talk to us about any of those items, eighteen through twenty-eight?
Move the uncontested continuance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes. That is approved.
We have three new requests for continuance. Item six, which is C-6197, item nine, which is S.P.U.D. 547, and item thirteen, which is P.U.D. 1393. All requests for deferral to February the 25th.
Same question with item six, nine, and thirteen. I see that one person has signed up to speak to us on item thirteen. Okay, Judy, thank you. Anyone else who came down to talk to us about nine, excuse me, six, nine, or thirteen today? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move the continuances of six, nine, and thirteen.
Second.
Gave a motion and a second to continue item six, nine, and thirteen. Cast your votes. That is approved.
What date was it? What date were they? What date would they be?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay. February, two weeks. Are there any other continuous requests from the public? J.J.?
The applicant on item number twelve, S.P.U.D. 546, he requested two-week continuance.
Anyone come here to address us on item twelve today? If not, I'll take a motion. Boo. Gave a motion and a second to continue item twelve. Cast your votes. And that is approved. Now we'll get on to the items for individual consideration.
Item one is S.N. 066, which is to consider a resolution changing the name of Mustang Road, extending north from West I-40 Highway to Northwest 23rd Street, changing that name to Yukon Parkway, Ward 1 and 3.
Is the applicant here or someone on behalf of the applicant? Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Bill Denton. I'm the superintendent of Yukon Public Schools. My address is 9033 Northwest 79th Street in Yukon.
Thank you.
I am here, and I appreciate the opportunity to request the changing of the name of Mustang Road, extending north from West I-40 to Northwest 23rd Street to Yukon Parkway. The Yukon citizens have passed a $92 million bond issue to build a new high school campus that is being constructed right now. The construction completion date will be August of 2011. This new campus sits on a 110-acre campus on this road at the present time. I've asked a number of people in our community to come with me today because I really wanted you to understand this is not a Yukon school request or an issue for our school system. It's really a community request, that our community of Yukon felt very strongly in this vision that our Board of Education had to expand and meet our growth of our school system in Yukon. And the answer to that is to build a new high school campus on this 110-acre tract. The campus will allow us to move grades in other campuses so we can grow in all of our eleven school sites. It's the vision of our board and our community that we meet the growing needs, and this request to change the name is a community request that I heard when I started talking about trying to get the bond issue passed. Our community passed the bond issue at over eighty percent, and they really are excited about this new campus in our community. The mayor, the city manager, the Chamber of Commerce executive, many of our Chamber of Commerce members and my school board members are here today to let you know that this is a community request and feel very strongly that this name change would benefit our community as well as our school system. I'll answer any questions.
Well, Mr. Denton, let me make, I guess, observation, or maybe it's couched in terms of question, I don't know, but you front on 10th Street, you front on 23rd Street with your campus boundaries. You could have taken access from 10th Street and named the access Yukon Boulevard. You could do that with a drive off of Mustang Road, or you could even consider a request of a name change from 10th to 23rd Street. The section between I-40 and 10th Street has a number of established businesses for whom their address is established and important to them. And as I evaluate those objections, they're sincere legitimate concerns that those business people have.
Yes, sir, and the city manager, Mr. Crosby, and I have met with those individuals and discussed their concerns and made every effort to try to accommodate any of the concerns that they have about the name change. We feel like that the larger number of individuals that do not feel like it is a problem for them certainly outweighs the objections, and we understand the objections. The dentist office objection is mainly just the objection that it creates a hardship on them with insurance companies of never being able to get the address change right, and they missed some of those issues. And we understand that, and I don't think we have an answer for that, but...
Oh, it's a cash flow issue for him, of course, if he's not getting the reimbursements that are...
Yes, yes.
...applied for. And I hear what you say about the number of people who are in favor of this change, but they're not impacted by it. The business concerns that have raised issues about it are, in fact, directly impacted by it. And so to me, that's an important consideration, as I would weigh how I would vote or view this application. I don't understand why it has to go all the way down to I-40.
I think the reason that it, and I might mention too, and I think you already have that information, but the City Council of Yukon has already approved the name change from 10th Street North.
I understand that. That was why I said...
But I think the best response I have, our campus will be a state-of-the-art campus that will be utilized in many opportunities in the state playoffs. Right now, we host in Yukon at least seven state playoff opportunities where towns and schools come in from all over the state, and we are hosting those now. When we have the new stadium, the new arena at our school site, those opportunities will continue to grow, and in order for people to come off of I-40, it's a very convenient location, and we just think that the direction for our campus coming off of I-40, we've already had contact with the Department of Transportation, and they agreed to change all the signage at no cost and that it was not an issue for DOT.
Well, first of all, just so you understand, I applaud your school system. You've got a very fine school system. You're doing a really good job, and I think that's very, very important for the young people that attend that district. I've also had conversations with our public safety people, and they've got, would have significant problems redoing the GIS systems for fire, police, Emsa, and so forth, and they've raised that concern with us as well. I've sort of expressed my piece. Other commissioners? Mike?
I think that the reasons with respect of the change that have been put forth by the city are not addressive or don't go to the policy considerations that we have previously spent a lot of time on, along with the City Council, who have established these policies in response to requests which were far less significant in their impact and effect as this particular request. In other words, historically, how we've dealt with this is in the context of a small neighborhood street that is the most likely example are the ones that are changed in honorarium of a pastor, something along those lines, or other persons that have impact with respect of two to three, four residences. And, you know, I think one of the primary things, as I look at the policy, is the restriction on or prohibition about renaming arterial streets. That, I can almost stop there, just because that doesn't fit with our policy and the significant issues that we've wrestled with on this particular topic for a while. I don't think that this qualifies as an educational campus that is self-contained, because we're not talking about renaming a street. For example, my view of that would be a street inside of OSU's campus over at 10th, where we renamed it Janice Powers Boulevard, or one of those. So I don't think that meets this, and this is a significant portion of road that is an arterial street that has been carried this name for a long time. And again, I applaud the efforts of the school, the school system, but I don't think that the policy or the reasons that have been advanced are, one, go to the policy, and, two, meet the test that I would apply in the analysis of a renaming.
Can we share, is there others? Nick?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just point out two things. Again, I share your concern. I've raised this issue the last time I heard it, of the need to go down to the interstate. But a more compelling reason in my mind, along with what Commissioner Henley was saying, is each week we are given a city map showing off the location of all of our cases. If you look at that map, you start at the south side city limits, goes down to the river. All the way north to 164th Street, we have Mustang Road. This would carve out right in the middle of that, basically a mile and a half with another name. It's in the face of our policies. I still believe the school has an opportunity to redesign the entrances and make them city streets, name them what they want. But I'd have a problem just carving out a mile and a half of a road that runs literally from border to border in this city and naming it something else.
Any other comments, commissioners? Any questions of Mr. Denton? Jim?
Maybe toward, maybe this question would be to the staff. Would there be a possibility of that street bearing two names? Would that solve the problem? That may compound the problem. I don't know, but maybe the staff could have addressed that. Maybe it carries Mustang Road slash from the interstate to 10th Street. Could that be a possibility? Is that, would that eliminate some of the problems that the people on that street have now?
I don't think so. I don't think we've ever done anything like that, that I can recall.
Well, I'm thinking about Martin Luther King. And, of course, it bears Eastern on one end and on the south end, and it bears Eastern on the north end. There's only a strip through there that actually carries that, but I'm not sure that one doesn't carry two names. But it seems to me that we, not too awful long ago, that we did a street that away that buried two names. And I can't remember, I tried to look it up last night, and I cannot remember what it was. I don't know whether that would compound or eliminate the problem with the people that have the address on there now, so...
Well, I don't recall anything like that, Jim, but the M.L. King section of Eastern does meet the city's name change criteria for someone who's had a, well, obviously, a national impact, and that's one of the criteria that apply to considering something like that, would be like having JFK Boulevard or something like that.
Mr. Chairman?
We don't have that kind of a situation here. Yes, Janice?
I'm not sure that it's the example that Commissioner Allen is thinking of, but I remember the last time that we had someone here before us, and it had to do with South Meridian, as I recall. And it's something with the airport and the realignment of those streets. And I remember very distinctly the woman who came and talked about how it took, you know, years to get it finally changed over where all of her bills were coming, and then it was changed again. And basically, I mean, the reason I remember it is because in the end, there was really nothing we could do for that woman. And, you know, we had sort of created this mess, if you will, and it was a huge, huge, and very real mess for her, but there wasn't anything we could do about it. It really couldn't bear two names, you know, we really couldn't sort of make it Meridian Circle Court Boulevard. I mean, you know, there wasn't some other name we could attach beside street that was going to help her. It was just a huge issue, and it's one of the reasons why I have a really hard time supporting this. You know, I think what the school is trying to do with, you know, the enlargement of their system and meeting the needs of their students, all of that's fabulous, and, you know, I think we're all very supportive of it, but the considerations that are involved in something like this have to be more than just, you know, how many people like the idea and how many people don't. And I think, you know, there has to be another way to skin this cat, whether it's, you know, creating a boulevard that goes up to the school and giving it a name, or, I mean, I get that there are issues with the school and the name Mustang and all of that sort of thing, but there has to be some other way to solve this problem than to change, you know, two miles or a mile and a half of street that has a name that is well-established and is going to be a nightmare for some people to have to deal with the change. I just can't support that.
I think one thing that I would say to that, when we first, when this was first brought to my attention, and Yukon may be a little special and unlike other communities, but it didn't even dawn on us that this would be a major issue because we have so many streets in the city of Yukon. Garth Brooks Boulevard has four names in Yukon. Check Hall and Cornwell. Cornwell goes north of I-40, and Check Hall goes south. So it seemed to be a common thing for our folks and not something that was even considered to be a difficult decision or thing to even talk about. It seemed a natural thing to do in our community, and I guess that's why we're, really felt like that it was just kind of following the pattern of what we have in our community already.
No, you know, I'm sure you're aware, and, of course, this is in Edmund. The street that goes through the main part of Edmund is Edmund Road. It's Third Street, I believe, Second Street. It's Highway 77. It's Highway 66, and it's, it actually bears five names. And how, you know, maybe that's what it is, yeah.
Well, commissioners, a decision, action? I move to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item, excuse me?
Could I have just a couple of minutes?
Sure, your name and address.
Sure. Sean Abenanto. My address is 748 Dana Drive in Yukon, Oklahoma. This was a very important issue to me because that's the road I live off of. I live right there at 7th and Mustang Road. That's where you turn into the Drake Stone addition. And just a couple of things I just want to share real quick with you in terms of your consideration. It's kind of confusing living right there in Drake Stone. My family was over there for four years. It's a new construction area. I live in Yukon, very proud of that. We live off of Mustang Road, and I have Oklahoma City utilities. So when you talk about confusion, Janice, I know exactly what you're talking about. We've dealt with a lot of that. I remember the issues we've had there in the neighborhood. We've tried to figure out who to call, and it's just one of those areas where it's tough. The reason I like this proposal is because it really helps separate us as Yukon residents away from Mustang, away from the difference. Like I said, I've lived there for four years. I know the dentist that you're talking about. He's a neighbor. There's not a lot of businesses up and down that road between I-40 and 10th Street. There's a handful, and I know it's a problem, and I know it's an issue as a business owner, but there's times I think we have to embrace the process of growing into greatness. That's what this city has done, and that's what Yukon is attempting to do. I would also say, as a former firefighter from Oklahoma City, it is our job to stay up to date on the maps and the streets and the new additions, and it's constantly changing. I moved away from this great city for 14 years, and I moved back in 2002, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm glad to be home. And what I have seen our city do in terms of embracing this process of growing into greatness has been truly tremendous. I would ask you to maybe take a moment and really think about it, in terms of setting us apart as a community. It makes it a lot easier for us folks that live right there in the area when we tell people we live in Yukon. Well, how did you get there? Well, it's off of Mustang Road. More than once, family Christmases and so forth, it's been very confusing for people coming to my home with it being Mustang Road. I understand some of your concerns, but I do think it is a worthy option. Thank you.
We're happy to have you back.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any further comment? Ready to vote? Cast your votes. It is denied. Next item.
Item two is ABC 707, which is an application by Garage Bar LLC and Dylan Rosenheimer for an ABC 2 district overlaying the C-3 Community Residential District at 3621 Northwestern Avenue and Ward 2.
Brian, you may find you need to make a very abbreviated presentation. Just tell us what you're asking.
Okay, we're asking for ABC 2 overlay to, for the restaurant that we want to open at 36th and Western, looking, as you can see by the rendering, to update and renovate an existing unused gas station, hasn't been used for much some time. The name of the facility is Garage with casual dining, and that's basically the request.
I neglected to ask you for your name and address for the record, Brian.
It's Brian Fitzsimmons, Fitzsimmons Architects, 2721 North Walker.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Action? No one signed up. Oh, wait a minute, pardon me. I made a mistake. Doug Gibson, if you'd come up, please. I didn't know that. Give me your name and address, please.
Pardon?
Your name and address, please.
I'm Doug Gibson. I'm the executive director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Oklahoma County, and we're located at 3535 Northwestern. We've had a relationship with the city of Oklahoma City, particularly the Parks and Recreation Department, since 1995. We've been actively operating a Boys and Girls Club there in Memorial Park that's located in 35th and Northwestern. Actually, Memorial Park runs between Western and Klassen Boulevard, 36th on the north and 34th, approximately 34th or the alley of 34th on the south. Since that time at that location, we've served about 18,000 kids. 1993, we did a comprehensive community needs assessment. We determined that there were 14,000 school-aged kids that lived within a two-mile radius of that park. One of the primary reasons we located in that park is because that's where a lot of kids are. And so we wanted to really develop a comprehensive plan that would allow us to serve more of those kids. For 13 years, we were in the small Uptown Kiwanis, Uptown Kiwanis Community Center. That building is no more. The city has taken it down. So we've been in that place. We knew there were a lot of kids. We knew what the needs were, so we approached the city. Long story short, is we were able to negotiate with the city of Oklahoma City a 75-year land lease for the land that a proposed building would be settled, would be built on. That lease started three, four years ago and has 71 more years to run. We have subsequently built a 35,000-square-foot building there. Hopefully, you've seen it. It's on the east end of that park, faces Western. And we have about 350 kids that participate in our programs on a daily basis, and this summer we'll have about, I say 350 kids, 350 at a time. And this summer, we'll have a program that will serve 500 kids at a time at that location. We have some concerns about the proposed use of this corner, the southwest corner of 36th and Western. We do, we, meaning the park, does share a property line with that subject property. And we have concerns because we don't think that a bar is a good use of that land in association with the city park where there's lots of kids. Secondly, is we have invested about $4 million there in that facility at 35th and Northwestern. At the end of that 75-year land lease, then those buildings will be deeded to the city of Oklahoma City. Hopefully, they'll want to continue to operate a Boys and Girls Club there, but they will be the owners of that building at the end of 75 years. So the association with the city park, such close association with the Boys and Girls Club, where there's such a large congregation of school-aged children on a daily basis. And then thirdly, is we know that we will end up sharing our parking lot with the bar there on Western because it's such a small lot that you can't park very many cars on there at all, and it really stands to reason that all of the overflow parking would end up in that parking lot there at the park, and there would be probably a need to build a sidewalk between that property and the parking lot on Western. So we strongly, for those reasons, strongly oppose the planned use or the proposed use, I should say, of this property. We think that would make a nice coffee shop or donut shop or something of that nature, but not a bar.
Mr. Gibson, just one observation. You understand this will be a restaurant and not a bar. I mean, they'll serve alcohol in conjunction with meals.
It's called the Garage Bar, and that will be the name of it. That's who the applicant is. As I look at the agenda, it says the Garage Bar LLC, and a bar in sheep's clothing is still a bar. And it's been my experience with sports bars and things of that nature, even though they serve food, they're a bar.
J.J., can you comment about parking for us? Parking, yes. Parking?
Parking?
What are the parking requirements there?
The parking requirements are one space for every 100 square feet of the building. They've got 1,356 feet. They've got 14 parking spaces.
So they meet code?
Yeah, they meet the code.
Brian, what do you, did they write here? Tell us exactly how you intend to operate.
We intend to operate, or I should say that the proprietors intend to operate as just that, a casual dining, relaxed atmosphere with the ability to serve mixed drinks that would give us a variety of perhaps using local breweries and that sort of thing. But it's very straightforward in that regard. There's, we did talk to him initially and the original intent was to perhaps open a bar, but that was part of the conversation was in an effort to be good neighbors, changing the operation of it so that we can, for one, increase prosperity and good establishments along Western Avenue, but also be good neighbors. As far as parking, we understand that we're in, in code requirements, but we also realize that if it is successful and at peak times, lunch and dinners, if there's a need for extra parking, the intent is certainly to valet that parking. The former owner of this particular building's current station is across the street and he has expressed that he's more than willing to allow valet, valet parking at his location and that sort of thing.
Okay, Commissioners?
Could I, I just had?
You mentioned you have 14, just short of 1,400 square feet. How much, design-wise, how much of that is going to be serving area? How much kitchen?
The kitchen area, I wish we had brought the interior plans, but obviously we have a certain portion for restrooms in the kitchen areas in the neighborhood of 400 square feet. We're talking about a pizza oven, simple grill-type setup to serve that type of food.
That 400 is kitchen only or is that the other common areas, the restrooms and whatnot?
The restrooms is, so roughly half the building is, is dealt with, with kitchen and, other functional, and then roughly half is dining.
So you roughly have 700 feet of, of dining area.
Correct.
And if you're successful, which I hope you are, I'm wondering how I can efficiently use 700 feet of dining area with 14 parking places. I know it meets code, but from a practical standpoint, it doesn't look like a fit to me. I think this gentleman's probably right. We'll be parking at the park. And that's my other question, one to staff more than anyone else. This is adjacent to a park and I noticed the staff report went to the Parks Department and there was no comment back either favorably or unfavorably from Parks. As indicated in our staff report, is that correct?
That's correct. We had conversation with them early on. They were concerned about the club aspect, but once we told them it was a restaurant, they had no comments.
And what about hours of operation? Last question. I'll leave. That's not for you, JJ.
Name and address, please.
I'm Dylan Rosenhammer, 16425 Sterling Creek Drive in Edmond, Oklahoma.
Okay, thank you.
Hours of operation, we're going to start, you know, it's obviously going to be a little bit of a work in progress. We have to make sure and find out when the best peak hours are going to be, but we'd like to start out and do like 11:00 AM to 2:00 o'clock.
You mean 2:00 AM or 2:00 PM?
2:00 AM.
If I may, what are the hours of operation of the girls' and boys' clubs?
We operate during the summer and school breaks, we're open from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM at night. And then all day Saturday, we do our sports programming there at that site. During a typical school day, we'll open about 2:00 and go to 7:00 o'clock, Monday through Thursday, and then we're open until about 10:00 o'clock on Friday nights.
Okay, thank you. Janice?
And I would love to see a little restaurant open at this location, but I cannot support an ABC overlay for this spot. I, I just do not feel that this is a good location, that this is a good mix with the existing use of the boys' and girls' clubs there. There's, there's no question that there will be parking that overflows into the, into the park parking and I, I just can't support it.
Any other Commissioners' comments, thoughts? James, you look like you're nothing.
The only observation that I had, and I think that, that in looking at this, when I saw where it was, I'm vastly familiar with the area. The Cock in the Walk is only, what, 100 feet away across the street and, and so it's not that you haven't been surrounded by clubs. If you said your, your radius is two miles, there's all up Western bars, et cetera. But as Janice said, on the corner of Memorial Park, I just have some difficulties and I really think that I can't support it either.
What, I have one question.
James, go ahead.
What is the actual legal capacity of the facility?
I believe it is, is it 60? It was around 65. Yeah, 60, 65. And with, with our 16 spaces that we've already got, especially if we valet park, we can certainly fit more than 16 cars in those spaces. And with the compliance of Mr. Black, Ronnie Black across the street of his garage over there, we'll have more than enough spaces to accommodate 65 people.
You know, due respect to the applicant. I had occasion recently to be further down on Western and exit where the current sip-and-go lounge is. And we recently increased there to ABC, to allow mixed drinks, et cetera. And, you know, that parking is just all up and down that residential street right there. Now, these guys don't front the residential street necessarily, but that overflow will have to go somewhere. I, again, so 60 to 65 people is a pretty good crowd because I'm familiar with, like you say, Bob, there's not much there at that, at that corner.
And there's also, across the street, there's the, the Lone, can't remember exactly the name of, there's probably another 12 to 14 spaces right there that we'd certainly get permission of them and they would comply with, let us park there as well. And I really feel like that, that the overflow into the Boys and Girls Club won't be that much of an issue. You know, 65 people might equate to, you know, realistically 25, 30 cars. With 20 or so spaces there on our lot, especially if we valet park, and then with Mr. Black's space across the street, that's, could easily be another 15 or 20 spaces. One or two cars max might be in overflow and we could just make sure and publicize inside the restaurant that we do check the parking lot, the overflow parking lot. If you have parked in the Boys and Girls Club, then you will be subject to being towed. And we would happily enforce that.
I don't know how we require that in an ABC overlay, though we don't have the ability to incorporate any valet or other kind of parking condition on, on the overlay.
You know, this, and, and again, due respect to the, to the applicant and the owners, but this is the sip-and-go application. I mean, not, again, no, not paint you, try not to paint you with the same brush, but, you know, dependencies on secondary facilities for this type of parking just do not seem to have a long track record of compliance.
There's, there's another factor that hadn't been really addressed about the capacity, number of people in your bar. And, and really, it's the parking. It's where, it's where your patrons will park. It's unlikely that they'll park across 36th Street and walk across the street. They may. It's unlikely that they'll park across Western. They may find a space in there. It's highly likely that they'll park in the parking lot just a few hundred feet down the street in front of the Boys Club or the Boys and Girls Club. But, but your rendering, we haven't addressed the fact that you have outdoor seating in front of this facility.
That's correct.
Which could theoretically double the number of people that would be coming in, assuming that you're successful. I mean, assuming that it's, quote, the place to go. If you double the number of people, that has nothing to do with code, parking spaces for square footage. It has to do with how many tables you're throwing outside. And so there's no way that those people on a nice summer day or a nice summer evening aren't going to park in that parking lot right down the street and kind of go back and forth through Memorial Park. And I just think that probably it's just an ill-considered location and use for the corner.
Well, our, our peak hours are obviously going to be after the Boys and Girls Club has closed for the day because didn't you say it was 7:00 PM? Is that correct? Till 10:00 on Friday.
Probably true.
And then certainly the Lone Store across the street will already be closed. Mr. Black's place will also be closed. There'll be ample parking there. And in, in respect to, you know, where the people might park, if you've been on that area, which I assume you have, the people that go to the other, you know, the, the bar that is there, that's Cock in the Walk, they park across the street, across Western, and that's Bruno's Furniture, I believe it is.
Well, they have to.
Right. They, they have to because they don't have the space that we, that we do have for our restaurant.
No, I understand.
And, and I understand there is some parking issues and, and we certainly are doing everything we'll be able to do to mandate them not parking in the Boys and Girls so we can check it every 10 minutes if we need to. I mean, we can certainly, it's, I don't think that's going to be the big issue because there's plenty of space there and we're, we're up to code. And again, if we valet, we can fit more than just 16 cars in there because we can, we can actually dictate the space that we use.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you have something?
I was just, just piggybacking on parking issues. It seemed like it was going to even compact, compound the impact of the whole area because Cock in the Walk, they already park across the street. So we already have a parking issue there now, so this will just add to the parking issue, the way it appears to me. And, and then staying open to 2:00 at night, it enters more into a bar setting opposed to a restaurant at that time of the night. So then, so then that even further impacts the, further influences the impact of the facility on the rest of the area in my viewpoint of it.
I mean, with, with, with the compliance that we have from Mr. Black across the street, that Cock in the Walk does not have, that's going to give us plenty of room to park, you know, our 40 or 45 cars or so that we'll need on a nightly basis. I mean, it's, it's, the area, I, I think it's going to significantly help the area. It's going to bring in, it's going to clean up the corner, first of all. I mean, that, that poor little garage is set there for a long time now that's been vacant. I, I feel like it's only going to be positive for that area. It's going to bring in, you know, tax dollars to, to the city. It's going to, it's going to help improve just the overall look and feel of the area, possibly the real estate up and down 36th as well, once, once there's more money and, and it just looks a lot cleaner there. I, I think that putting a donut shop or a coffee house is, is a feasible, great idea, but realistically, there's not a lot of people that can come and spend the kind of money it's going to take and get back out the return on a coffee shop. So we feel like with a, with a restaurant that we're going to provide and, and the atmosphere we're going to provide, that that's going to help the area along with be able to survive and not be up, closed in six months and, and have to start all over again.
Well, it seems to me the pros are cleaning up the corner, which could obviously use cleaning up.
Sure.
Parking concerns me a little less than it would in some areas because in our more urban areas of the city, parking is an issue wherever we go. It's an issue all the way up and down Western. It's an issue in lots of other areas where the city's been built up for 50 or 75 or 100 years. Frankly, the thing that I heard that concerns me is 2:00 in the morning equals bar. And that's not what I was hearing earlier. And I don't think that's what needs to be on the corner by the Boys and Girls Club.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to the applicant and in light of all that's been said here, I'm going to move for denial of this application.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion, Commissioners? If not, cast your votes. It is denied. Thank you.
Item three is CE 778, an application by Chesapeake Land Company to close various platted utility easements in the area of Northwest Claussen Boulevard and Northwest 63rd Street.
Mr. Chairman, Tim Johnson and Dennis Fox, we're here on behalf of the applicant. This is a situation where, at the present time, in coordinating with your legal staff, Mr. Brummett believes that the portion that we're asking to be closed was actually vacated probably a number of years ago. But from a title standpoint and dealing with the title company, they wanted us to come back and close and vacated, vacate this matter, so that's what we're doing. I want to make sure you all understand that what we're vacating is extraordinary right-of-way. It's 200 feet at this location. We're just pulling it down to the standard 100 feet of right-of-way. And plans have already been improved for development of Grand Boulevard in connection with 100 feet. So that's why I think your staff is supportive and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
James?
I have one question, Dennis. The utility department says that all utility easements be retained. Are there any utility easements within the 50-foot right-of-way that you're doing away with?
I'm going to let Mr. Johnson answer that.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. The, there are not any utility easements that are not in a separate easement. In other words, there were some platted easements that included some utilities that may be in that 50 feet, mostly on the east side. There's nothing on the west side. But the water and sewer and other public utilities like ONG, OGN, E, they all exist currently within that 100 feet.
So what, what happens to the ones that's in that 50, 50-foot area?
They'll remain in the easement that was platted.
Oh, okay.
Separate and apart from the street easement.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Janice?
Well, I have to say, I did a real double take when I saw this and, and I have a lot of questions and concerns about traffic along Grand Boulevard with all of the development that's taking place there. And so that, that was the focus of my particular set of questions, I guess. But after having seen sort of what's planned for the area and how they're going to deal with that and knowing that they have an effort underway to upgrade the street and the, its capacity, and also knowing that there, there will be, within the area that is being retained, enough right-of-way to do five lanes if need be in future. I, I am satisfied that for now, that this is, that this step is, is okay. So unless there's somebody else who has something else they want to say, I'm going to move for approval.
I'll second that motion, but I have a question. Has the master plan that we were revealed, what, a year ago, is still intact and it's still functioning with respect to what you're doing here? Or are there developments or, or projects that are different from the master plan that we all looked at and saw?
Tell me what you saw a year ago.
Did we, did we ever see anything?
Every time you come in with closing something or doing something, I always have to ask the question. And this is curious because this has to do with, you know, the expansion of Grand. There's a whole, you know, another lane going through and so something must be anticipated to occur on this piece of property that I wonder if you would reveal to us what that might be if it's different than the master plan that was shown to us.
This is akin to taking the trees out before you decide what you're going to build, Bob, that's all.
I think that's the best answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for answering my question.
Those are nice, they're nice trees too, but yeah. We do have a motion in a second. We do have a motion and a second. Any other comments, Commissioners? If not, cast your votes, and item 3 is approved. Item 4.
Item 4 is PC 10245, an application by Orion Lawns to rezone 300 Northwest 104th Street from I-1 Single Family to I-1 Light Industrial, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bill Collins here on behalf of Orion. Martin Kiefer of Orion is also present with me. He's outgrown his current location, so he's entered into a contract to buy this location. He's in the landscaping business. A use exactly the same as what he has is directly across the street. It's a brand-new metal building that's been put up, that's owned by Myers Landscaping. He wants to do something similar to that. This is a undeveloped part of the city. 104th Street is the only street that's open in the nearby area. Everything else is pretty much shut down.
Mr. Chairman, I had a lot of questions about this application until I drove out and looked at the property, but I'm convinced that this is a good use of this land.
Yeah.
104th Street is open, sort of wink, wink, nudge, nudge, and there's not a lot you can say. If there's ever a place that would benefit from being developed as a landscaping business, this is probably it. So, unless anybody else has anything they want to say, I'm going to move for approval.
No one has signed up, Commissioners? We have a motion and a second. You're ready, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5 is PV 067, an application by Albert and Denise Hofer to vacate lots 1, 4, and 5 of OF Windus subdivision, north of Northwest 23rd Street and west of North Ann Arbor.
Mr. Commissioner, Members of the Commission, Brian Cooney, Cooney Engineering, asking for your approval, there's no TEs, so that's a first for me.
Did you want to start that again? Huh? Did you want to start that again?
I had all these words I was going to say today, and they're all gone, and so I didn't have anything to say. You're probably glad.
Any questions, Brian? No one signed up.
I do have a question. This, the application for putting together the project that you want has been continued.
Yes.
It was done. And this is my question, if it's replatted, is it replatted in, is the plat those, you know, little small 50-foot lots? Is that, or, I mean, explain to me what this replating vote would mean? Is it we remove the plat that was there in deference to or in substitution of what?
There's actually a preliminary plat already approved on that property. The application that was item number 6 is a new preliminary plat, same property, obviously, but it's fewer lots than the preliminary plat that was approved about a year ago, or two or three years ago. So, it's already preliminary platted as small lots now, and what we've done is come back in with a new one, with parking in the middle and different things, more amenities.
But the plat now already supports 50-foot lots, is what you're saying?
Or smaller. I'm not sure how big they are.
Smaller now.
Yeah. Yeah, the preliminary plat's already approved for smaller lots, and we're coming back with a new one that has two fewer lots than the previously.
That's the next time that you come in.
Yes.
But that, I mean, that's really my question, is that you propose to vacate and replat, but when we vote to replat on this application, there's just a square with nothing on it? You know, I mean, that's what I'm just questioning, what am I, what's my vote?
Well, look at.
I really don't know.
Look at item 6.
Item 6 is, I tossed in the trash.
Well, you moved too quickly.
Well, no, but is that what we're voting in favor of?
Well, it would allow the smaller lots if we approve item 6 at a future meeting.
So, what we're doing right now is we're just taking away what's there.
Well, no, we're vacating and replating.
Well, we're not taking.
That's what this says.
So, maybe this is just a vacate.
I think that you just want to vacate.
All we're doing is vacating those three lots right there.
I think this should just say vacate.
Well, that's really my point, is that it says vacate and replat, when I think that what we're doing is just vacating.
Right. I agree.
Isn't that right?
Yeah, we are not replating today.
No, just vacating those three lot lines this week.
That was my question.
If there's a motion to approve item 5 today, it is just to vacate the current plat.
And I so, I move.
Lots 1, 4, and 5.
Right.
Yes. I mean, on item 5, I move to vacate lot, whatever those are, but not the replating.
Right. We have a motion.
A second to vacate.
And Mike's second over there. Couple minutes ago. To vacate lots 1, 4, and 5. Cast your votes, and they are vacated. Thank you.
Just as a clarification on this, is this Ward 3?
I'm sorry?
Is this in Ward 3 or Ward 1?
That could be, yeah, that is Ward 3, there's a little finger of Ward 3.
Is that just a small little piece there? I looked at the application, I thought that was in, is that 3, JJ?
Do you remember Jack Cornet?
Yeah?
He lived there.
Oh. Learned something new every day. That's Ward 3?
That's how they got that little finger of Ward 3 going north there.
I got it. Thank you.
Item 6 has been deferred to February the 25th. Item 7 is ABC 705, an application by Premier Hospitality Group for an ABC 2 overlaying I-1 Light Industrial in the Scenic River Overlay Design District at 4401 Southwest 15th Street, Ward 3.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Robert Black.
That's you? Would you come forward? In this case, you're the applicant. If you pull the microphone down and give us your name and address.
My name is Christine Ducey. I live at 9804 South Chartel, Oklahoma City, 73139, sir.
Thank you. And you're here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, behalf of Premier Hospitality.
Okay. And you're just asking for an ABC 2 overlay for the restaurant area of the hotel, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No one has signed up, Commissioners?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 7. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies. Have a nice day.
Item 8 is C 6198, final plat of fountain grass, addition section 5, Ward 3.
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson, the SMC Engineering representing the developer. This is Phase 5 of this subdivision, and I've read the TEs, agree with them, and just request approval of this final plat.
Okay, Commissioners, no one has signed up. Matches the preliminary plat?
Move approval of the final, of the plat. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 8. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you very much.
Item 9 is deferred to February the 25th. Item 10 is SPUD 441, an application by M&amp;D Industries Corporation, DBA Sonic Drive-In to rezone 2828 Southwest 89th Street from PU D 234 to SPUD 441, Ward 5.
Is the applicant here?
Good.
JJ?
It's been continued for two years now, maybe he has a little confused about his continuance date. We'll give him one more and give him a call.
I'm going to continue item number 10.
To February 25th, our next meeting?
February 25th, the next meeting.
Okay.
Hey, John. Hey, JJ, I have just one quick question. What's the, the photo on this, is the only one in this packet that is from '04? Do we not have, is there no other updated, every other photo in this packet's from at least '08? I know that's a minor detail, but this photo is just.
This is the aerial.
Aerial photo?
The aerial photo, yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll put a pair of new ones for next.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 10 to February 25th. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 11 is PU D 1410, an application by Oklahoma BMX Parents Association to rezone 2559 Southeast Grand Boulevard from I-1 Single Family to PU D 1410, Ward 7.
Donal B. Navard, 4800 North Lincoln Boulevard, on behalf of the association.
And, Mr. Navard, you are just continuing an activity that has been occurring there for a long term?
Well, no, this has actually been moved from the river and 15th where it was until that area became approved, and this is under a lease with the city, and so this is now their location.
Okay.
And in order to satisfy the terms of the lease, the understanding requirement was that a PU D would be filed, and we have so done so. No problem.
Commissioners, comments? Bob?
Well, my only comment on this, I understand that the activity has been going on on this piece of property, and you're just getting legal with it or something, I mean.
No, they're moving to this property, Bob. Just explain, they're moving from an area near the river to this site, which is leased to them by the city.
Ah. Many years ago, there actually was a track in this area, but that was been.
A long time?
A long time ago.
My only comment, should any trees be removed, they will be replaced with a minimum three-inch caliper tree elsewhere on the site, as approved by the Parks Department. In connection with the building of the track, the BMX track, which goes up and down and all this business, do you have any idea, because, back to the aerial, this is, it looks like there's a whole bunch of trees on this.
Yeah.
Are you going to destroy the trees?
No, no.
I mean, I would really, I really want to know that, because this is parkland.
The answer is no. No, that the track will work in and among the trees, there won't be any taken out.
And this is a one-for-one tree replacement?
Yes, sir.
That's what you have with the Parks Department, that's the deal?
That was the understanding.
Who monitors that? The Parks Department?
Well, I assume the Parents Association will monitor it as well, because they'll be responsible for it, but this, they have a good relationship with the Parks Department, and I assume it'll be a partnership, and they'll keep both sides informed.
Yeah, but, I mean, Wendell would be involved, that's the director and all that business, because the BMX, the reason why I say, Don, that BMX tracks that I've seen on the television are all dirt, hills, and there's devoid of everything, and, you know, I'd like to see that the paths go through whatever trees there are, and I assume that that's what's anticipated with this.
That's what's anticipated.
All right, good, thank you.
And I echo the same sentiment as Commissioner Bright, because when you look at the layout of the track in relationship to the aerial photograph, it looked like it's going to impact quite a few of the trees. So, it just appears to be that way.
This is James Axtell, he's the president of the association.
That's right here.
He can respond to that.
Hello, my name's Richard Axtell, and I live at 733 East Rose Drive in Midwest City. I'm the president of the Oklahoma BMX Parent Association. To answer your questions about the trees, if you would actually look at the physical location, there are no trees in the area that we're going to be building the track in.
So, this aerial photograph is not correct?
We're actually, we're going to put the track in, there's no trees there already. Exactly. Right? Exactly. There are no trees that will be taken out to put the track in.
Okay. Would you look at this aerial?
Pardon me?
Would you look at this aerial for me? Is this where the track is going in this area?
No, sir.
Okay.
The track is going to be in this open area right here.
Okay. But see, on our plan, it shows it in this area, see?
Well, that's kind of deceiving, okay? This is a existing petroleum line.
Right here.
An open area. This is all open here, virtually no trees, or maybe half a dozen trees in that whole area. But our whole intent was to use the property as it is. We don't plan on cutting any trees.
Yes, good. Well, I was saying is that the two maps don't match.
Yeah, I saw the same. Mr. Axtell, if you would just repeat into the microphone a little bit of what you said over there, which would not have been picked up.
Okay. Absolutely. We are planning on working with the physical shape of the property right now. We don't want to take any trees out. We would prefer to have more trees, actually. Most of that area that is open on your aerial images is actually bedrock, exposed bedrock. We're going to cover that up, cover it with grass, and put our track on it. We will not be taking down any trees. If we do, we will replace them, gladly replace them. Actually, we will probably be adding trees, as opposed to taking trees down.
Okay, thank you.
Our participants like to have shade to sit under.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions?
I don't have any really questions. I will tell you that I drive by this site every single day, at least five days a week, sometimes six, taking my children to school, and so I'm very familiar with this property, which if some of you haven't driven by, and so I know what the layout of it is. Having said that, I'm excited to have something like this going in there, although my children do not participate in that sport, I'm excited to see that going in. Having said that, should you take trees out, they will be noticed. I drive by there every day.
So, we now know who is going to monitor that for us.
Exactly. We have a monitor.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in that regard.
Yes, Nick.
This is also involved with the city and the city Parks Department, and I've worked enough with the Parks Department to know that they are tree-conscious. So, I think there's some extra level of comfort based on that.
And I can assure the, I can assure the commission that the lease that was entered into speaks to a lot of these questions. It was done very well.
Okay, Commissioners, action?
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next applicant will be able to provide those trees, I think at a cost. This is item 14, PU D 1409, an application by Oakleys to rezone 2700 Northwest 178th Street from Agricultural and Single Family Residential Districts to PU D 1409 and Ward 8.
Dennis Fox, I'm here on behalf of Jeff Oakley, who's sitting to my left. This is an application that is before you today. Back in 1995, Jeff came to me and we filed an application. He has a business you all might have seen on the property. What this will allow is an expansion of the business. Right now, Jeff has wholesale landscaping. We have provided for that, two parcels, one, 430 feet on the north portion can be utilized for commercial. If we add any additional commercial other than associated with the existing building, then we'll have to come back before you. You'll see the design review, and we'll go from there. We have a ground sign, even though I'd like a pole sign, we provided a ground sign.
Thank you, Janice.
And we have excluded half the uses out of the commercial district. If you look just to the north, the property just to the north is straight C3. But we were able to acquire that little Oklahoma shape that is on the west side of the property from the church, and that's what allowed us the opportunity to look at and modify the application. So, we can agree with all the technical evaluations, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments? No one signed up?
Move approval.
I have a question. That the C3 portion, we allow commercial to seep down the street rather than on the corners than what we're talking about. Admittedly, across the street is as much C3 as you can possibly stomach, but nevertheless, this C3 portion that you're talking about, the north side, is adjacent to what, you know, these RA residential areas. I mean, you know, and the uses that you have for C, I was, the application, if you came in with just an expansion of the business, but I don't know that I'm comfortable also approving C3 for uses that I don't know about. And that's really where I have difficulty with this application.
Okay, to answer that question, there's an existing building on the site, and we anticipate that we'll continue using that building. We anticipate that we'll have some retail sales in regard to.
To the business.
Some of the business. But if we come in and if Jeff decides that he wants to do additional commercial uses, then what the staff has required of us is that we come and present that site-specific plan to you all for your further review. So, that.
With all of the uses that we will have approved with this application?
That's correct. That's correct. But if you go out there, I mean, based on the existing building in this location, based on the evergreens that'll be on the east side of the property line. on the evergreens, it'll be on the east side of the property line, it provides, I think, a good line of demarcation in regard to stopping the commercial, and provides a protection and buffer for the residential back to the east, and so that's why I think it's appropriate. Plus, we have a ground sign.
Just to clarify, Dennis, on the 8.3, uses allowed in this PUD, colon, uses governed by C3 district regulations, and then 8.4, uses allowed in this PUD, uses governed by C3 district regulations and limited in location to the north 430 feet.
Correct.
And then you then have a list of uses. Are those the uses that we would be approving?
Yes, sir. Those are the...
That could happen on this, so this...
That limited list.
Okay, so that limits it.
Yeah. And it about, it takes about half of the commercial uses out of it.
No, I understand. That's why I just wanted to clarify.
Eating establishments with drive-throughs would be okay there, for example, based on...
It would be, it would have to be 150 feet east of the property line and have to come back before you all in regard to a site-specific development plan.
Are there two classifications for eating establishment and fast food?
Microphone, microphone.
One is fast food, and then one is drive-in. This is just fast food.
That and an eating establishment sit-down.
Fast food, and then there's fast food with drive-through window, and there's the actual drive-in like a Sonic. So, this could be fast food, there wouldn't be a drive-through window.
Okay.
Walk inside.
There is two different classifications, JJ.
Heating establishment, fast food. Fast food with drive-through window.
Right, that's what...
Now, Bob, we know that if your preference for drive-through windows, we can get Dennis to add...
That's where you get your biscuit in the morning.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask to be really clear about what we're saying? We're approving the uses now, but we'll get to look at how you lay them out.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, we have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Everybody ready? Cast your votes. You're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 15 is C6179, a revised preliminary plat of Deer Creek Park and Ward 8.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll Sparks, representing the applicant, and this basically is just a revision to a preliminary plat that was approved back in, I believe, 2003, 2004, somewhere along in there. We have made a few modifications to it, and so that's the purpose of the application. We are in agreement with the five TEs. I will mention on TE number five, the previous preliminary plat was submitted with private streets, and the intention of this preliminary plat is to be public streets. So, we can do whatever we need to a TE number five. I think it probably best if we just delete it.
We can delete it.
Correct.
I have a question, Kendall, on open space versus recreational area. How much of this would actually be recreational area, and do we meet our...
I'm sorry. I'll be honest with you, I forgot the numbers, but I checked it right before we come, and we exceed it by close to a quarter acre or something on your requirement for recreational common area. As far as total common area, we exceed it by several acres. I want to say...
Well, when you're counting open space, which is the pond or the park and whatever...
If you look at total common area, we're exceeding it by...
A lot.
Quite a bit. The recreational common area, we're still exceeding it by, I want to say, a quarter acre or so.
And Kendall, what we're really doing here, I know you've changed some things, but what we're really doing here is we're going away from private streets.
Correct.
And this plat has a single entrance that appears to meet the fire department requirement.
Correct.
So, we're good there. But we have also some stubs coming out, one to the north, one to the west. Are those stubs into areas you, your client controls?
Currently, there's already a stub street to the far west, and obviously, as part of your subdivision regulations and everything else, we're connecting in a court... We're tying in there, correct. And also, we're connecting on the net, the north into the Windchase addition. I think that that's probably fairly imperative for the Windchase addition itself as well.
But that is not also controlled by your client, that's my question.
Exactly, no. The connections that we're showing it right now are as per your ordinance and staff's recommendation.
No, but my question is, your client does not control Windchase to the north.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's understood, your question.
I have a question about that, about that connection. On the drawing here, it appears that they do not align, is that...
That's, I was looking at that earlier. I think that's just a mapping situation with the information that you have in the house. They do align.
Okay.
In reality.
Okay, commissioners, leaving TEs 1 through 4, deleting TE 5, which refers to private streets. No one has signed up?
Move approval with that deletion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 15, deleting TE 5. Cast your votes, and that is approved. Thank you.
Item 16 is ABC 706, an application by FPS Quail Springs LLC from ABC 2...
A bar and hotel?
Restaurant, overlaying C3 Community Commercial District at 3117 Northwest 137th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name's Randy Malone, 209 Southwest 89, Suite F. I represent FPS Quail Springs LLC. This is going to be a four-point Sheridan Hotel. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
It's under construction now.
Just a restaurant connection with a hotel.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 16. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 17 is an ordinance for public hearing, amending Chapter 59, Section 4200.1 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2007, providing for building permit requirements.
Any discussion, or we need a motion to approve the ordinance change?
So, really, we're just aligning the two requirements up, permitting requirement along with planning?
I think we're really clarifying...
Clarifying.
The ordinance, so that the issue isn't a question of whether the inspector ought to be questioning something or not. We actually come in and get a permit.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and that is approved.
That's right.
Now, planning commission committees, I guess, would be the first. Are we getting, or maybe we're not because of a lack of activity, adherence to the garage committee's policy?
I have been approached by Mr. Box recently on behalf of some of the developers to have a little discussion regarding that, about the recent technical evaluation that we've added. And so, I have not been able to further that conversation with Dennis, but he and Kendall raised a potential concern to me, not necessarily disagreeing with the policy, but exactly what our intent was with respect to how we actioned the policy on a go-forward basis, and what they might like to see. So, I intend to first have that conversation before I advance any, anything else. I think that, happy to have anybody else that wants to participate, was on the committee participate, so, anyway, that's all I have on that.
Okay, planning commission members, one thing I want to bring up is that we should do something for Kevin George, who served many years with us and was a delightful fellow board member. He worked hard, he was well-informed, he had good judgment, enjoyed working with him, and I think there ought to be some way we recognize people who devote that kind of service to the city. Now, the council has a policy of not doing anything, because there are some 60 boards and commissions around the city, and probably Galen Keaton would get nothing else done if she had to deal with turnover on boards and commissions, but...
Well, we had a little going-away function at one of those places in Bricktown for George Washington.
Yeah, and I think the planning director picked up the tab on that.
That was the previous planning...
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
Mr. Chairman, in all seriousness, early on, when I first joined the commission, when the commissioner left, we did have a little function, basically a luncheon-type thing, and usually presented them with a little plaque. Over the years, and maybe because of budget constraints, whatever, that has faded away, and I know we are in a time of budget crisis right now. I don't know that that's necessarily a reason for us not to do something, if...
Well, we ought to get a discount at Interurban if we took him to lunch there.
Well, but my point would be, if it's not in our budget, which it's probably not, obviously, we can, between the commission members, we ought to be able to put the tab.
I would think maybe that could be arranged, yes. I think we should do that.
So, who arranges it?
Well, I guess I do.
Since you brought it up.
Since Nick pointed a finger at me.
Yeah, I'd be happy to contribute and participate in that.
Yeah. I think we should do that, and maybe we get him a little plaque of some sort, or...
Well...
What does the city do?
Funny you mention that, but we have, we have done that. I don't know that we have the, we've got a little clock, plaque thing, and we have a resolution as well.
Resolution and an engraved...
If you haven't received the...
Gift, it should be here before the next meeting.
Yeah. So, otherwise, it would have been on the agenda today, but we'll have it for the next...
Okay.
We'll have it here soon. I guess no point having it here to present to him. We can read the resolution here, or at least you can approve the resolution, and then we can present that to him.
Might be a nice idea if we frame it, if that, or is that done? I mean, it's not a big deal to...
When we're talking.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the best ways to celebrate might be giving him another job. You need to find some other, some other commission that he can serve on.
That's punishing him, you don't...
No, not at all. I think he gave us such benefit of his input, and I'm sure there's another board out there somewhere that needs him.
I'm going to let him rest for a couple of minutes.
No, no.
Nick?
Chairman, I do have a couple of other points I'd like to maybe have staff consider, and maybe we could direct toward a study session at some point. I've had some, there's a couple of things that have come up recently, and I've had some preliminary discussions with the councilor's office about the ability, when we can and cannot have reversion clauses in PUDs, and how we could maybe come up with something on a regular basis if that was the commission's wish. And also, on the compatibility issue, if you'll recall, we came up with an issue of 75% of the adjacent property. Well, the way that has been adopted and applied, it's the actual strip of ground initially next to, or contiguous next to, the larger addition, and not the whole new addition. We are going to see a case in a couple of weeks where the, to get around that, the applicant has simply made their little skinny lots, still little skinny lots, but just made them deeper to make a square footage adjacent to the adjacent lot. And that's, that's, that's correct, okay?
Technically?
Technically, it's correct, as the rule is and as the rule is applied. Perhaps we would like to revisit that in a study session. So, those two things I would ask staff to think about if we can't...
This is a case we're expecting on the next agenda?
Pardon?
We'll have to be at the next meeting then.
Well, it's just something I'm bringing up. I don't, we've been living with it, I don't know that it has to be done immediately, but that's something that I'd like to get kind of...
Well, if we can, it would be informative to the case, so...
So, it's a little bit like looking, going back and looking at how we've applied the landscape ordinance over the last several years, and somebody may meet the points test, but not accomplish what our goal was in terms of establishing the system to begin with. So, we're back to, well, you can, you can meet the standard, but, you know, you haven't accomplished what we're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things, and I wish Mr. Box hadn't left, but I know we're, and JJ may confirm this, we've got a couple of applications coming up on landfills, one at Eastern and I-240, and the one at 36th and Sooner. Is that not correct? JJ, aren't they in progress? If you recall, the one at 36, I mean, I-35 and, no, it's not Sooner, it's I-35 and Bryant.
Oh, Bryant.
Yeah. Or I-240 and Bryant, I'm sorry. Several years ago, we had a request, well, it's been two or three years ago, that we've had a request to add some ground to that for soil to cover the trash. And when we started that, if you recall, there was, trucks would come out on Bryant, bringing all kinds of mud and trash and everything else. We made a requirement that they stop that. And since then, and also the dust problem, since then, they have spent about $30,000 on sprinkler systems. They have added several hundred feet of gravel driveway going back out to Bryant. They have, they have put several hundred feet of blacktop going out to Bryant, and also installed a tire wash that, and it's almost eliminated any trash or mud going back out on Bryant. And, you know, of course, that landfill gets a lot of visibility, you know, not only from I-40, but I-240, but off of Bryant. And the sprinkler system has somewhat eliminated the dust problem, okay? But the one on Sooner Road and 36th is an abomination, and I think James can, and I asked, I told Dennis the other day, he called and talked, we were talking about that one. I said, Dennis, that trash dump will not get my vote if they don't start doing something to clean up that mess on 36th, and they also did on Northeast 23rd Street.
Right.
And I don't know whether we've got some policy that keeps that mud off of the road. I know in new construction, we, they have to have gravel to go on to before they come onto a public street. And I don't know where that trash dump has to have that same kind of provision or not, but that's something we really need to take a look at, because I think EPA could get involved with this if they don't clean it up. And I bet once they get involved with it, they'd clean it up, so. But I wish Dennis hadn't left, because it, the one on 36th and Sooner pertains to him.
JJ, what is the, what control over that do we have in a formal sense? I mean, you're not supposed to be trashing the public streets, obviously, you're bringing...
I wouldn't be a bit surprised to find out that that's a violation, and we'll gladly look into that. If they come in with a new PUD or something like that, we could certainly address it.
Well, he's fixing to, because, you know, and he's already got my warning, so...
JJ, can you let us know at the next meeting what standards currently exist? Would you do that, please? Any other commissioners with comments?
Just that Jim, you had my vote too, on that too, so...
It's kind of funny. Well, I started policing that one, I-240 and Bryant, and I've been by there two or three times, and the first time I went by there, it's kind of funny, the... three times, and the first time I went by there, it's kind of funny, the operator of the place, he didn't know who I was, where I was from, or anything else. But when I called Bob Thompson, the attorney for them, and Bob got on the phone, every time I go by there now, he understands who I am and, you know, what we're all about. And that has done a lot of good, I tell you.
Planning Department, Russell?
Well, we have at least one topic for next week. I believe we still have a couple of other topics, is traffic impact analysis. I think we've pretty much wrapped that up, so we'll be able to bring that back. I haven't checked with Susan to see whether that would be okay for the next Planning Commission date, but I assume that it will be. But anyway, that will be coming up soon. I know Aubrey had presented the landscape review last time we met, I think, and I have yet to, we're presenting that to Kathy O'Connor to sort of evaluate options for implementation as in some of those, one of those recommendations that we, at least cuts across departments, so we have to work that out.
Development Services?
Some of you may already know, but those that don't, the council appointed a new planning commissioner for Ward 3. His name's Buck Irwin. He's most recently a park commissioner for Ward 3. Should be here next time.
Yeah. He would have been here today, he had a medical emergency with his father, he's in Texas right now.
Mr. Chairman, I wondered if, do we need some sort of presentation about the application of the new LED ordinance, so that we're all up to speed with sort of where it is and what it says, and how it impacts our considerations?
Commissioner Gail suggests you consult with staff personally, so that he doesn't have to hear it again. Municipal Councilor's Office? Any other business Commissioners? Motion to adjourn? And that's passed. We're adjourned.